Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us for the Monday, January 10th Fayetteville City Council meeting. Those who joined us remotely. At this time, as we go to item 2.0, invocation, certainly before the prayer. You know, it's been a very difficult few days in our community, so our thoughts and prayers go out to all of the people in our community that have lost their lives to, for various reasons, to gun violence and COVID, but particularly the last two incidents. We pray hopefully it will be incorporated in our prayer tonight, to pray for our community, our city, to pray for patience, calm, and justice, and to pray for the families who've recently gone through these tragic times. So our hearts and prayers are with you. At this time, as we go to the invocation, we ask if there are any volunteers to go to Councilman here for the invocation, immediately following if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks you for the lead-in for the prayer tonight. Dear heaven and father, once again, we call upon you for, for help. We're asking you, Father, to come see about us here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. We ask you, Father, that we're facing some turbulent times, and we're asking you for healing of families that have lost loved ones. We're asking you, Father, to refresh and support minds and hearts as we go through all the processes that, and concerns that we are going through right now, Father. We submit and surrender ourselves to you, Father, for there is no other help that I personally know that can ease the heart and can ease the mind and can uplift the spirit. There's no other that can do that, Father, other than you. And tonight, Father, I lay down my heart and open up and ask you to come in and see about us here. Help those of us that sit around the diocese tonight. We ask you in Jesus' name, Father, also to help you to allow us to go through the agenda items, Father, and that our minds and hearts will be open, that we can do the fair and decent things for our citizens. And, Father, we not only ask for this prayer for Fayetteville, North Carolina, Father, but for all of these type of concerns that, that are in my heart that I'm not even speaking tonight. We ask you to look across our city, our, our state, our nation, our country, our world, and come see about us, Father. Continue to help us through the COVID that we're dealing with across the globe. In Jesus' name, Father, we ask you for these concerns and all concerns, those spoken and unspoken, and we surrender ourselves unto you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 4.0, announcements and recognitions. Mr. Bullock.
Evening, sir. Happy New Year to you. Same to you and to all you council members. I am not a person that is easily surprised, and not in a good sort of way, for us to be here 666 days into our state of emergency and 136 days under our current order. My reference to a surprise is literally how we've doubled some of the records that have been set throughout this experience with coronavirus. I'll make reference to Saturday, which has been the highest daily total that we've had since this thing started at 29,069 cases. Up until that point, we had kind of experienced a little bobbing along between 11,000 and 12,000 as a daily experience, as a record. So that's quite a record. The other record is the percentage positive of total cases, which for today, Cumberland County's sitting at 32.7%, and five is where we want to be. I caution, though, people to draw too much sometimes because there is the admonition, the more you test, the more you find, which to some extent might be true. But also, when you start comparing small data sets, sometimes numbers can get a little slippery and, and sometimes magnify. But I think when you look at it in the context of the state as a whole, we're, we're far and above on this third series of trend lines, higher than we've ever been. And, and I think one of the questions that keeps coming up is, okay, how high are we going to go? And I'm not really clear on where the answer is. I've heard the experts talking about in the next couple of weeks, we might ceiling out somewhere. Fingers crossed, that's what we want to do, and the sooner the better. I know some of the holiday gatherings and so forth have been blamed as part of this. There's still a whole lot more that's unknown about Omicron and so forth, about how much more it is suggested that it is contagious, even though it may not be as severe an illness as the Delta variant and some of the others. With all that being said, I, I kind of will repeat what I said to this body last time. We know what to do. Part of it's discipline, part of it's patience, and part of it, sometimes, I'm going to call it just an exercise in risk management. What I mean by that, if my wife and I are out and we need to go to the store, one of us will go in. The other sits in the car. That's just limiting that exposure that much more, especially in a crowded grocery store. We are disciplining ourselves, trying to shop as much as we have in the past because we want to support business. We want to eat from those restaurants, but we're still doing takeout a lot. That helps the restaurant, too, especially the ones that are short-staffed. So there are all these factors that we, we know the practices, we know the principles, and we've just got to kind of hunker down and continue what we know works. Separating ourselves until we can get back to warm weather i- is going to help us. There are parts of it that we don't know, and, and I'll give you the classic misinformation that comes to my office all the time. A vaccination does not equal complete protection from infection. Plain and simple. I think the misnomers are that sometimes people just see it as a magic shield or some sort of immunity from all things, and that's not true. It helps reduce the severity of the illness, and that's why we encourage it, but at the same time, if we can prevent getting it whatsoever, that's what we want to do. The testing with our partners at the Health Department now has gone full bore, nine through five, Monday through Friday. That's as simple as a phone call to 433-3600, and they can get you, if you're not pre-registered, they can help you with that process. They've also advertised some products I want to kind of put a highlighter on, that they may or may not have in stock. I can't speak to whether they have them in stock, but they had some free rapid kits that you could pick up and take home. Fifteen minutes, you got an answer. They also had some of the PCR swab kits that you request by phone. It's mailed to you. You do the, the hard work, put it in the kit and mail it off. Takes a day or two turnaround. So there are even more options out on the street than what we had before, as far as going to the corner drugstore, going to the Health Department, or, or these pop-up sort of opportunities. So the bottom line is let no one say that testing is not available. The last thing, and you hear this in the press, I've heard flu-rona until I'm about tired of the, the word. People are trying to, I think on some level, insinuate that the two viruses somehow get together and recombine and come out to be some other catastrophe. It's not true. All they're insinuating with flu-rona is simply that the sufferer, the victim, has both illnesses at the same time. That's not a good thing, and that's what we want to prevent as well. That's why we keep hammering home the flu vaccines, and we also want to point out that at this point, right now, we've had two flu deaths statewide. We had seven last year. So these practices are, are keeping people from getting really sick, and that's what we want to continue. And I'll be subject to any questions or comments.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kinston and then Wright.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of the questions that, that came up over the weekend, and just for clarity, mask. Is there now a certain mask that is more, more subject to be preventable than others? Or can you just give us any information on the mask itself?
I think we're still hearing a bit of spirited debate about the single ply sorts of things. Some of them made out of nylon or some stretchy material. Many of them are worn in a gaiter fashion. I've, I've heard some words about that from the standpoint that they'd rather people wear something that's multi-ply, kind of similar to what I'm wearing, either the KN95s or N95s for maximum protection. The one thing that I would, would twist the answer back to you with is, with masks, we try to accomplish two things. One is source control, meaning that when I have droplets and discharge, I'm controlling it to everybody else. The other objective that we're after is filtration. The more layers, the more refined the mask is, because these are electrostatically charged, the better filters they are. I think, long story short, we don't know enough about Omicron, for instance, to really know. There hadn't been that much testing done. But I think my response is, some mask would probably be better than none, but I would wager on the fact that if I can separate the distance between us to that magic six plus, I'm probably better off.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And the hand washing and so forth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Wright.
Thank you, Chief, for that presentation. The number you gave, 433-3600, for the testing of COVID?
That is the Health Department's number that will get whatever your question happens to be. If it's testing, they can route you.
Okay. So are they giving the monoclonal shots as well?
I don't know about that particular therapy right now.
Okay, but they are-
I know there was a scarcity of it at one point. I don't know if that's been resolved or not.
Yeah, but they are giving shots for the COVID virus?
They are vaccinating, and these tests, if they're in their inventory, because I could say they're there today and they'll be gone first thing in the morning, they're giving them out.
Uh, we're giving tests, our, our church is a test site as well and for shots, but they're short on monoclonal, and the vaccines ran out, so just want to let everybody know. But they'll be back in next week. And, so that's why I wanted to ask you if they had them over there. But they are running short on supplies.
Yes, sir. And, and I think we're creatures of convenience, and those tests, especially the take-home, are nice. The one thing that the experts have asked, if you use the rapid tests and you get a positive, they would love for you to follow up with the PCR, just to make sure that you're truly positive.
Thank you.
All right, council, any other questions for Mr. Bullock? All right, Mr. Bullock, we'll pray for better news the next go-around.
Yes, sir. I hope our numbers are dropping the next time we're together.
All right, thank you so much. Council, moving on to the City Manager's Report, which I think he has briefed us on, one of the most pressing, which was the rap. Mr. Hewitt? Okay, thank you. Item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. Council, we have a motion to approve the agenda. All right, it's a motion, I think, by Councilmember Harris, seconded by Councilmember Ingram to approve. Any discussion? Discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to get a consensus from council to see if I can add an item to the agenda.
So it will take a supermajority. Which item are you sticking on?
The item would be to allow the Department of Justice to come in in regards to Mr. Walker murder.
Can you repeat that, Councilmember Banks?
Yes, my consensus, I'm requesting that council take a consensus to add an item to the agenda, which would be allowing the Department of Justice to come in in relates to Mr. Walker's death.
Allowing them? It's a criminal matter. How does that work with the State Bureau?
I think if the feds want to come in, or if it's federal law, do they, how does that work, Chief?
So the request was, I think you said, the Department of Justice to come. I've already been in communications with the FBI, who would be the governing body to look at this situation, and they are already doing a cursory overview of that. I have already been in contact with the FBI, who is the governing entity that will look under, which is civil rights, any civil rights violation, and review it for what's considered color of law, and they are looking at, they're going to be assessing it already.
But not the Department of Justice?
The FBI is under the Department of Justice.
Yes, ma'am.
So you said they are investigating, and not because I'm asking-
The Department of Justice is already, it's part of the FBI.
Okay, so they're part of the investigation?
Okay, so I've already made the-
I just want to be clear.
I'm going to be clear.
And see if you have to speak up a little bit, can't you?
The only, the only, it's not, I'm sorry. I thought it was on. Hello, hello? The, the FBI is the governing entity that we're taking assessment, and they are a part of the Department of Justice.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they're playing a role as far as the investigation along with the FBI.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that last part.
I said, I just wanted to ensure that they are assisting with the investigation, because they're not, because that was my question.
Yeah, they don't assist with the investigation. It's two separate-
Look into, look into the investigation of Mr. Walker.
They do their own sole separate investigation regarding any civil rights violation.
Okay.
The SBI, the FBI does it for a criminal aspect, and they come in and do what their responsibility is. So it's, they have separate duties.
Okay, so just so that I'm clear, they are a part of this investigation?
They have been requested and are doing an assessment of this situation.
So assessment, investigation, two different things?
That is correct, because only, only the FBI can determine whether or not they're going to take it on, but they are collecting statements and evidence that's already been provided for them.
Okay, so then, as a council member, my request from council is to take a consensus so that they can come in and do an investigation?
Yep, we don't-
They don't work like that.
Well, help me, help me understand this, because I'm asking for them to come in, and you said it's two different entities of them doing assessment.
The Department of Justice.
Department of Justice doing an assessment, but right now, the FBI, they're doing, they're the, they're the one that's doing the investigation.
That is correct. That's totally separate. The FBI, which governs civil rights, which is a part of the Department of Justice, is doing a, an assessment of all what has occurred thus far, looking at evidence, looking at statements and body-worn camera for that purpose.
Okay, so I guess where I'm confused at, because my question is, are they a part of the investigation? Because you said they're not. Are they not, or they are? I mean-
They will never become a part of the criminal investigation. They will have their own separate responsibility and jurisdiction to look at what they look at.
And so they're looking into this matter. Because I guess I'm looking for a yes and no, and if they're not, I will take a consensus for them, too, look into the matter.
Okay, so, so clear, clarify this, because I'm confused now. Okay, so you're saying that the Department of Justice is analyzing this for civil rights violations, which is the part that they would do it. So they would do that whether requested or not, because if, if somebody violated civil rights, then they come in and do it. The FBI, with a S, you're saying, is handling the criminal aspect. So I guess her question and request is, there's nothing that the council can, if, if a vote doesn't trigger the FBI to come in. So please explain that. That's what we're asking you for.
That is correct. A vote does not trigger that. The FBI is collecting evidence. Department of Justice, as you said, is another separate entity. They are looking at incidents that happened, but the FBI is looking specifically at the same situation that the FBI is looking at, to look under any, if any civil rights violation has occurred under color of law. Two separate investigations.
All right, you clear, Councilmember Banks? All right, so any discussion or motion? You have a question?
Well, yeah, I, so, just so I make sure I'm clear, what exactly, again, will trigger Department of Justice to come in? The, the, what you're saying is if a civil rights law was violated, right? Okay, and that comes out through investigation, but not by us asking them to come in?
That's correct. And I, and I have already been, as of yesterday, in communications with the FBI, and they are doing an, an initial assessment of the facts, the body-worn camera, and statements that have been made.
So how soon, how soon could some form of statement from either Department of Justice or FBI come out to say, this is what we are currently doing?
So FBI did a press release already, just generally saying they're taking over FBI, with a S. They've already pushed that out, saying they're doing the investigation that occurred based off our request. The FBI, I cannot control when they're going to push anything out, if at all, because they, all their press, press release, as they told me, has to come from DC.
Well, all right, so just like the Attorney General kind of is a good point person from a politician, from a political standpoint for FBI, I guess the Eastern District Attorney, so I guess would, if there is a review of this from a federal level, you're saying that Dave, you've been in touch with him, but I guess a conversation or something could probably be asked of the Eastern District Attorney, I guess, to review that, and they just appointed Mr. Easley as the, as the new Eastern District Attorney, who would be able to, to order that. But I guess from, from our end, we can't order the FBI to do anything, so I guess any conversation, council, would probably need to take place on that level, from, from a policy board on our end. They, they're not going to get a resolution and decide to do a criminal investigation. They're going to do that whether they are asked or not. So if there's something, some requests, I guess that would probably go to the Eastern District Attorney, I suppose. So how does that work, Ms. McDonald?
So I, I want to go back, I want to go back and make sure that we're in order here. So the, the request, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin was asking to add an item to the agenda. Should it get eight votes to add it to the agenda, then that would be the appropriate time to debate and/or discuss what action would be taken.
All right, yeah. So we are in, have a motion, probably second, have discussion. Any other questions on the motion? All right, council, this is a motion to approve the agenda.
You have to have a second.
There was a motion by Councilmember Harris, seconded by Councilmember Ingram, to approve the discussion. Councilmember Banks asked for modification to add. So either you can withdraw motions, or just vote this one down, if you, and then you can entertain a motion to add, or they can take a friendly amendment to add. But based on this conversation, I'm not sure what your ask is to add, so.
The first motion would be Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin motion to add item to the agenda.
Even though it was already a motion and a second?
That's the, that would be the proper order, would be to vote that up or down.
What do, how do we dispose of this motion that is, that's already on the floor with a second, before she acts? She acts that during the discussion phase of it. So it'd have to be withdrawn, or voted on.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor. It is a little difficult for me to hear. So there was a motion to approve the agenda and a second.
Correct.
And then as a part of the discussion, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin asked to make an amendment.
Correct.
So the makers of the motion have to agree to accept that.
Or not.
If they, or not. If they do not, then her motion goes nowhere, because-
Her request, yeah.
-the motion to add to the agenda has to go before the approval of the agenda.
All right, so repeat that. There was a motion-
But I understand when you stood up, that if we are discussing this item, we went too far in what we were-
Yes.
Okay, then I don't have a problem with it, because I, I, I have my questions, and I, that I hadn't asked that she was speaking of, so.
You accept the amendment?
So, so Dean, are you withdrawing your motion, sir?
No, he's accepting the amendment.
Okay, so, and you accepted it as a second, so, so, for discussion, okay. All right. Everybody clear?
I have, I have a, a comment or question.
Okay.
So the city attorney have made clear that as a council, we don't have the authority or power to-
But what, what we need to do first, Councilman, is, is we need to take a vote on adding an item. Then we'll go to the, then we'll go to the item.
Then we'll go back to that discussion.
And I'll come to you for questions.
That's fine.
All right. All right. Any other questions on this? The amended motion is to add the discussion of the DOJ to tonight's agenda.
And it takes three quarters.
Takes eight, yes. All right, any questions? All right, council, look to you for your votes to approve the agenda with the modification. All right, so those, those, keep your hands up. Those voting in favor, Davis, Banks McGlaughlin, Wright, Colvin, Ingram, Hare, is that a, that a yes? Kinston, Jones.
Just a discussion.
All right, and, and Jensen. All right, those voting opposed, Councilman Dawkins. All right, motion carries, nine of one, and we'll add that as item 8.01. Okay, all right, so we'll get there. All right, item 7.0 is the consent. This is a motion to approve consent.
Approve.
This is a motion by Councilmember Kinston, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, those in favor, vote. Consent approval, all right. Motion carries. Item 8.0 is the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice on what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items which may be on tonight's public hearing, we ask that you please reserve those comments till such time. So when your name is called or you're acknowledged, please begin to speak. Please state your name and home address for the record. At 30 seconds, you'll be notified that you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your time, you'll be notified that the time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, unable to extend the given time. Madam Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Yes, ma'am. We have a total of five speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Robert Walls.
Mr. Walls, are you there? Mr. Walls, can you hear us? Jennifer Zee on the line?
Hello?
Yes, sir, we have you.
Mayor, City Council. I was going to talk about crime, but a bigger question is if Mr. Walker was Asian, Hispanic, or white, would you still be having the debate that you currently had for the previous 10 minutes involving the FBI into a state sovereign issue? That's a relevant question that all of you should be answering. In regards to crime, currently, residents have a 1 in 100- In regards to crime, currently, residents have a one in one hundred chance of being a victim of violent crime in Fayetteville due to the policies of this administration and the city council. Most of that crime is black on black crime, which is horrible considering there are too many pastors on the city council, too many you shake stick at, that could be influencing the communities within Fayetteville. I don't know where else to go from, from a city council that is unresponsive. But in regards to the current issue of Mr. Walker and that situation that needs to be resolved, if that officer intentionally shot somebody, then he needs to held accountable. But if Mr. Walker was Asian, white, or Hispanic, would you be having the same conversation? Mr. Mayor, City Council, I relinquish the rest of my time. I would appreciate a response to some of those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Walls. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, our next speaker is Ms. Maya Warren.
Uh, Ms. Warren, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council, and the Chief of Police. I want to start off by saying this, you disgust me. You chose on Sun- on Saturday to go to a protest for Mr. Addison. You gave the family a city coin and other tokens of appreciation, but what have you given the Walker family? Did any of you feel the need to attend a protest that was had on Sunday in his name? The answer is no, so for that alone, you disgust me, but I'll come back to you. To Chief Hawkins, because I know that you're in the room, you addressed your, you addressed your community and you lied. Basic thing that we know that you have the answer to, you chose not to speak out about. You chose to withhold the name of a murderer when you can definitely, definitely release it. You chose to take the stand and to hold accountable nobody. You failed your community, and for that reason, you gotta go. I've tried to defend you on several times, because you've done, because you've done, because you've done some good things, but lately, yeah, you've been making me feel really bad. So back to the Fayetteville City Council, to Larry Wright, I gotta give you a pat on your back, because you attended, you attended Mrs. Addison's protest, and you, and you acknowledged the family. But for Chris Davis, for this murder of Mr. Walkin- Walker to happen right down your district, and for you not to even make a statement, so much as I'm standing with the family, or I'm standing with the community, for you to say nothing, that disgusts me. For this to be a reelection year, and every single one of you chose to be quiet, that is disgusting. At what point are you going to understand that? We pay you, we want you to work for us. It is our money that is going in your pocket, but you choose to remain silent. So what I'm going to do, what the community is do, is go to the ballot and vote you out. You gotta go, you're not welcome, and it's time for you to pack up. You might as well send the unemployment line, because I'm giving you your letter that you're terminated. It's done for. So I hope you, I hope you do everything you have to do right now, sitting in them seats, because come at the end of this election, you're done for. So you can sit back and watch people like myself take this city to a better place when you had the chance to. I'm going to do things that you couldn't do, so how do you like that? All we asked you to do was to stand up. Stand up for your community and let us know that you stand with us, but you chose to sit on your couch and watch Sunday night football. Chief, because your men failed to arrest this man on sight, he got to sit at his house and watch Sunday night football. Now he has sheriffs that are guarding his house, that are protecting him, but who's protecting the streets? Who's protecting the community? Nobody, y'all are just waiting for another black life to be taken, and then waiting on some things to happen. So I'm letting you know right here, right now, your time is up, you gotta go, so go ahead and get ready, and I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Uh, Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Yes, ma'am, our next speaker is Mr. Cameron Williams.
Mr. Williams, are you there?
Not available. Okay, our next speaker is Ms. Angela Malloy.
Ms. Malloy, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm here. The master's tools will never dismantle the master's house. Good evening, my name is Angela Tatum Malloy, and I live on a street in the Haymount, two eight three zero three. There are so many issues that need to be addressed, that is, that was hard to decide where to start. My husband jokingly said, "You're going to have to tell them that you're going to need a continuation," and sadly, he's right. I left off last year with addressing the city council about the unprofessional behavior of members on our council who find that it is appropriate to speak to and address the women on the council in an aggressive manner. I thought it was just Councilmember Dawkins with the inexcusable manner in which he spoke to Councilman Kingston. There has even been times that you, Mayor, have also spoken to our councilwomen that has been addressed. But since then, we have heard that this poor behavior has extended to councilmembers Wright and Davis. Sadly, because of recent events, I have to set that aside, because we have more pressing issues to address. The master's tools will never dismantle the master's house. Here we are again, dealing with a situation involving a sheriff deputy killing an unarmed black man. I have been drilling my husband, who was once a member of the FPD K nine division, about proper procedure, protocols, and just what's plain right. There is too much to try to unpack in a limited three minute timeframe, but a few things stand out that need immediate attention. The current police system that operates without independent police oversight is a system doomed to fail the community it is supposed to protect and serve. You cannot keep using the master's tools of how officers are trained and managed and held accountable, and expect any positive long lasting change. The officers that arrived at the scene automatically determined who the victim was, and created an environment of protection for that off duty sheriff, Jeffrey Hash, who Chief Hawkins claimed was treated like an average citizen. Those two officers need to have their actions on that day investigated. The entire department needs new tools, and this city council needs to demand that Chief, that the Chief of Police provide them with answers regarding her officer's actions and inactions on that day. After hearing this council discuss whether a simple ask should be voted on, it's disappointing. Because you keep using the master's tools to attempt to dismantle the master's house, we will continue to have these same events to happen over and over again in our community until someone on this council, in our police department, in our sheriff department, is brave enough to dispose of the master's tools for real effective change. The master's tools will never dismantle the master's house, to be continued.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy, Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Yes, sir, our final speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan, are you there? Mr. McMillan, can you hear us?
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Are we on mute? Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Sean McMillan, six twenty-four Golden Lane Drive, and we're for justice for Jason Walker. Appreciate it if my timer's reset. On Saturday, uh, Jason Walker was killed. The facts of the matter are that we know at this point that Jeff Hash killed, Jeffrey Hash, killed Jason Walker. We know that Jason Walker was unarmed, we know that he was a pedestrian. We know that Jeff Hash was in a truck. We know that he shot Jason Walker, and that resulted in his death. We also know that the police failed on all types of levels to initiate a process that ensured justice for Jason Walker. First, they issued a false report, or a slanted report, that blamed Jason Walker for his own death, releasing information that Jason Walker had assaulted the car, jumped on the car. That was not a fact. The fact is that Jeff Hash killed Jason Walker. Jeff Hash should have been arrested on the site. He should have been arrested on the scene, and that did not happen. We're calling for and demanding the immediate arrest and charge of Jeffrey Hash. Uh, Fayetteville City Council, especially Councilmember Davis, it's your responsibility to take up for, to stand for, the people that you represent. Chris, we've talked about this many times. If, if you were in combat and one of your soldiers died, what would you do? Would you ignore that family? Having been in combat, I know that that's not, that's not what we're trying to do, that's not what our moral compass tells us to do. Chris, if you haven't reached out to the family, reach out to the family and represent them, stand for them, and make sure that they get justice in this case. You are their representative. We also ask the council tonight to, to pass a non binding resolution that denounces the, uh, behavior, the injustice of the Fayetteville Police Department in not arresting, uh, Jeffrey Hash on Saturday. That's something that is within your power, uh, Councilmember Wright. You talk about what you can and can't do, you can always do the right thing. Ron Luther King said, "The time is always right to do what's right." We know that you're all going to be at luncheons and celebrations for Dr. King, but we know that your actions have not represented the legacy of King. Do what's right tonight, pass a non binding resolution that denounces the actions of the FPD, and then take it a step further, enact policy that makes sure, that ensures that this doesn't happen again. The FPD is within your control and under your umbrella. City manager, we're looking at you. Lastly, to the people of Fayetteville, power concedes nothing without a demand, remember that. The same council has drugged their feet on independent oversight for years. The same council will not act unless we come out, unless we show them, especially with our vote, that these matters of justice are important to us. I urge everybody, especially the family and friends of Jason Walker, to not let up, to continue this fight until we get justice, until an arrest is-
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Madam Clerk, please call your next speaker.
Ma'am, we have no further speakers.
Okay. Right? This time, council will move to item eight point zero one was the added item, uh, requested to ask for, uh, federal, uh, review of the, the Walker su- situation. So, um, council, I look to you for discussion on that, uh, as again, I said, um, if there's a resolution, uh, you know, maybe we consider a resolution, or, or the permission to write a letter as a body, uh, that would go maybe to the Eastern District Attorney, I think is the chain of command for, uh, the Department of Justice for this area, uh, to review this. I know Chief Hawkins is going to do what she'll do to share information for the criminal side. We're just saying, uh, as a policy request, uh, that, that could be one way to address that. But I'll leave the floor open for any questions or comments. Councilman Hare?
I don't have a problem with, and I can support the resolution to move forward. So, I, I, I'm supporting that, but I do have a, a question, I want to get a more understanding of what the item that Councilmember brought up, because I didn't quite have clarity on that. Did, is it, I'm going to ask it, and then please give me the clarity. When the attorneys were up and the chief were up, they said that she has made contact with the FBI. The FBI, from there, goes and does an assessment to see if this is a place where they will be involved alongside, I, I assume, the, the SBI. Is that the way that I understand, and is that normally how it's done? When the Department of Justice is discussed to be brought into a particular municipality, or wherever they may be, they first have to make an assessment first? Is that how it works?
Yes, sir. You, and you repeated whatever was discussed before accurately, yes, sir.
Okay, and they have already been contacted for that assessment?
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, then Wright?
Well, he, well, I have a motion, he can go ahead, this is a question.
Councilmember Wright?
So as I understand it, Mr. Mayor, um, you suggested a re- a letter of resolution from the council, and I support that one hundred percent.
Okay, all right, so, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, and thank you for your explanation. Um, I do want to go ahead and make a motion for a resolution, um, in support for the council to support, um, the DOJ as far as the resolution.
All right, so, all right, this is a motion by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, seconded by Council, uh, Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? Council, I look to you for your votes for the resolution. All right, all right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous, motion carries. So, Mr. Manager, if you can get us a draft of, um, of the letter and the request going to, um, Eastern District Attorney Easely?
And can I add something too?
Yes.
And can, once that's sent over, can we, um, get feedback of what's taking place, what are the next steps? Once we send up, send up the resolution?
Now, now, I understand that this is a request to them, so, so they will respond-
Right, that's what I'm saying, can we get that response, whatever the response, just a-
Yeah, and they may or may not send something formal, but, okay. All right, all right, council, uh, any, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn? All right, y'all have a good evening.